All right, we can call on November 13th, 2024. Regular meeting of the Board is second to order, and we'll start with the play.
................................................................................. Thank you.
And now we can start with any comments from the public?
Do you want me to do that this day or?
Yeah, probably if that's...
Because I'm not on the agenda.
Yeah, if that's fine with you, or we can make a motion to add it to the end. It doesn't matter.
Why are you doing that? You're embarrassed.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, you want to come up. Do you mind sitting here so it's just easier to capture you for the recording? And we always know if you wanted to say your name for the record and...
Yep.
Take your time.
Hi, I'm Stephen Basset from Mystic. I'm a representative of the Economic Development Commission, and I'm also seat on the Westerly-Stonington commuter rail advocacy group. And what I've presented to the Board of Selectment is a draft resolution speaking in favor of the Westerly Station SOGR platform replacement and other improvements to the Mystic train station and the Westerly train station, all in encouragement of the Shoreline East extension as well as the extension of Rhode Island commuter rail. It's a draft resolution that has been adopted by the town of Westerly. I've presented this to the Board, which they're now reading. There is a meeting on Wednesday, excuse me, on Monday, where the advocacy group will be meeting again to go over other current aspects of this plan from a Rhode Island perspective. So I...
What's the date?
Monday, 9:30, and I can send you those.
What's the date of Monday?
No idea.
It's 18th.
Eighteenth.
Yeah, you said 9:30 in the morning.
Yeah, I know it's at 9:30 because it's... So I forwarded this to you via email, as well as some of the comments that came from the town of Westerly, which I encourage you to read my email.
Okay. And so beyond adopting this resolution to show general support from the two towns, is there more that we can be doing in the short term or to the next steps?
In the short term, I think it's just a continuous advocacy to our state leaders. Senator Summers is in favor of it, Representative Howard, and... Yeah, they all... I talk to them every time I see them. I put it in their ear. Both of them, I've been focusing on commuter rail here for years, and I've got quite a bit of support from the local community. I've spoken to the aquarium, I've spoken to the seaport, the Chamber of Commerce of Westerly and Stonetham, and they're all in Mystic. They're all in favor of spending.
Is the short-term ask like a feasibility study? Like asking funding from the state to do a feasibility study? Or it's like, what are the specific ask?
There's no feasibility study asked from the Connecticut perspective at this point.
Okay.
There is one from Rhode Island.
And they'd cover our... up to New London?
Well, Rhode Island would cover up to Rhode Island. But we would cover to our, into Rhode Island because it doesn't make sense stopping in Mystic.
I guess so, yeah, sorry, just to get around. So if there's no ask yet in Connecticut then about a feasibility study, but Rhode Island is asking?
Rhode Island is asking. In Connecticut, there was the...
There's a massive one.
There's a massive, yeah, it's a massive one. So in it, but that tend to have a more of a focus on the, let's call it, west of New Haven focus. Not that Stonetham is looked out last, but it is a lower priority. There was a book about two years ago to look at extending the line, come to New London, go up to Norwich, and then go to Stonetham. But I think the New London line, the Michael line, has gone away. Because there is a line there.
Yeah, I guess just trying to think about like the upcoming session, like or to ask for meetings, like I think, you know, we've been part of it. Everybody's like supportive of the concept of what would be the steps that we're asking to like get to that point? So would it be us to work with Rhode Island to do a joint feasibility study as a first step, or is it federal funding to just, we already know the changes that need to do like design and engineering to bring both stations to compliance?
Let me do that as it take a while.
Okay, yeah, that's where I just, I've been thinking as much as you have. I always am left a little confused as to what tangible next steps we can take. The resolution's a great start. I hadn't seen that, so thank you for bringing this up.
Great. So this would actually, with this resolution, allow, if it went through, allow you to go to Westerly to T.F. Green? Because there's a stop right now of T.F. Green.
Yeah, and there's one further south there.
Yeah.
Whitford Junction.
Whitford Junction. So it would pick those up?
Yeah, so the thought is to extend their commuter line down to Westerly and then have the Connecticut line go to Westerly.
Okay.
And it seems like, right, Rhode Island state government is super on board with this.
Super on board.
And we just need to, yeah, I think, build the momentum.
And there is a plan to redesign the Westerly train station because they too have the same issue. They would have to move the line about 40 yards north and straighten it out.
Oh, really? So they'd have to move their station?
They have to move, not the station, but the rail.
The rail. Oh, okay.
So there's the station, the rail, then there's another building?
Yeah.
They're going to move a line to the other side of that.
Isn't that Community College?
No, there's a line, there's a line, space for a line right behind it. But yes, right near there. And if you look at the bridge, if you're at the train station in Westerly and you look west, you'll see the train bridge right there, goes, the road goes underneath. It's wide enough for three lines. When it was originally built, it was built for having three lines. There's only two there.
And even that, I mean, would be a major win, I think, for the regenny.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't our stop to be right there.
But then if we work on Connecticut, because, you know, we've been talking about different options for traffic and...
And we'd need support to run Shoreline up to Westerly.
Yeah, and that we have.
With our station.
I think, I think the state's on board, the, you know, the Commissioner of Transportation is, they all express support for it, but it's just a matter of funding.
We're trying to reduce traffic on 95, so it's another...
But I'll keep you abreast of other things that come along of that. But I wanted to present this to you for consideration.
This is great. If you, and we keep up on EDC stuff, but yeah, I think asking the group, like, really practical next step so we could help advocate for the feasibility study or if it's design engineering money, and then is it also, that might be later, but at least figuring out how much money we would potentially be needing from Connecticut to run more trains and more lines all the way to Westerly, start working on them, on that.
Yeah, and one of the big issues is the River Bridge in New London. The Thames River, the Thames, that bridge is run, it's one of the few bridges in the United States that's run by the Navy. They did pick the schedule, so only so many trains can go over that bridge based on the Navy's schedule. That would be a long one, not the top of the head.
So we, you're thinking that a feasibility study would come before us doing any kind of resolution?
No, I think we could, we could have the resolution to show the support. I want to be sure we're asking for the right things because this is obviously very Westerly focused. I want to be sure our resolution is accurate.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that the feasibility study's been done, right?
Not to this extent, but it's a good question of like, what extent does that other study that Stephen was referring to, are they potentially going to carve that out? Is there money there that they could carve this out for? But...
It's a good question.
Yeah, and the gentleman who was like really advocating for it passed away, so I don't, I don't know where it's still...
He was a great guy.
But thank you for this. Yeah, if you want, like, we, our next meeting will be the second week of December. So if you have them by then, I thought...
Yeah, okay, I'll try to get something to you by...
Thank you.
And by email, obviously.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely send the...
We'll send it along to the...
Thanks for all the work that you've done over the years. My pleasure.
Yeah.
This is great. Well, thank you. Love this town.
Yeah, we obviously love Rhode Island too.
Love the train. And speaking of, another topic, may I?
Yeah.
Is it possible that have the Board talk to the Highway Department to encourage the Mystic River Cemeteries Association to pick up their leaves on the sidewalk? That is like gateway sidewalk in...
On Route 27?
On Route 27. It would be... I encourage you to speak to them and pick up the leaves.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, dude.
Thank you. I know I run there and it's really separate. Any other public comment? All right. Could I get a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of October 23rd, 2024?
Soon?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So there's under correspondence. We received an application from Monica Setcliffe for the Housing Opportunities Commission, and we received an application from Alyssa Morrison for the WPCA. And this, just to note for the record, as you guys know, the alternate seats have just been added to this commission with the charter changes, and so we're thinking that it'd be good to keep that application open since it's brand new and they've been waiting for it for like a decade, at least through February 2024, just get on the holidays and everything. But I haven't had a chance to talk with their chair yet, so we, I can do that by the next meeting.
Okay, good. I was going to ask if the...
The chair is effective immediately, so we could sit somebody?
Yes. But again, given that people have been waiting so long for this, I want to, I don't want to rush and fill them and then not...
That makes sense.
And obviously, yeah. So, but we can check with their chair about that, Chairman Cody. And then, under appointments, housing, Stonetham Housing Authority, could I get a motion to appoint Deborah Lee as the tenant member of the Stonetham Housing Authority?
Soon?
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I'm glad someone stepped up so quickly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Mystic River Boathouse Park Implementation Committee, could I get a motion to reappoint Nick Kappel as a regular member? And very excited to move Jim Kelly from an alternate member of the Mystic River Boathouse Park Implementation Committee to a regular member.
Soon?
Fair second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have to say that Jim goes to every single meeting and always has, and he has asked for so long to be moved up, but he'd had to have a resignation of...
A specific...
Just because of the way the commission set up.
Yeah, he's been, yeah, he's been so good. So yeah, somebody with a specific seat he needed to fill stepped down. So that was great. I know, I'm very excited.
He gets to participate if he shows up at a meeting.
He does, but he's really been waiting patiently to be a regular member. I think that's great. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then, could I get a motion to reappoint Lisa Reed to the Stonetham Housing Authority?
Soon?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope. At least thank people who...
Yeah, thank people, I know.
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under resignation, Gabriella resigned from the Cultural District Commission. We have to thank her for her service. She played a great big role in getting this up and going, and we'll obviously send her an official thank you. Similarly, Brett Perkins resigned from the Mystic River Boathouse Park Implementation Committee. We thank him for his service, and he's done great work, and I know he'll stay involved, not as a commission member. And under old business, okay, charter. So we said that we'd follow up after the election on the discussion from September regarding if we want to reopen the charter or reconstitute the Charter Commission. So I don't think we necessarily, I think it's too soon to make a move to actually act right now, but I did want to reopen it to see where both of you were thinking and kind of take that down, and then I think we'll have to, just timeframe-wise, make a decision by December.
Okay, okay.
So for budgeting purposes?
For budgeting purposes, yeah, and then I think, you know, if, I'm assuming they're going to have a goal of trying to get it on the November 2025 ballot. So last time we did it, we started in basically around this time, a month later. So I think the sooner we can get it, it gives them more time.
And this is really, what's left is the language, you know, just to kind of make it more gender-neutral language and to have it reflect what's actually occurring with regard to the departments.
And there was a few other, I was...
I'm a Board of Finance, spending.
The spending, like things that have to be sent to a town meeting, like things that our Director of Finance had said, you know, this is really low. Ideally, it would be moved a little bit higher. So it was like, I don't want to classify it as housekeeping, but it was more general items. But again, if we reconstitute, if that's right, we're the Board, they can, just like, you know, with any time, you add on things that they want to, other people could raise things, and they could say, okay, this time, we, you know, we're open to hearing them. So I mean, it's both an opportunity and a risk to, you know, open up your town charter.
Can it be done with, just from a cost, from a cost point of view, can it be done with less input from the, or less presence of the attorney? I mean, he was great, and obviously it's necessary for many of the steps, but could they meet most of the time without him and go through the wiring, and then, you know, have a certain number of meetings with him?
Here's a good question. We can ask them, I would, I don't want to speak for them. I would think they're more comfortable that they could. But I think the largest, and Stacy can jump in if I'm wrong, but the largest part of that bill is just unless the legislator changes the requirement, is that publication and the legal ad. I mean, that was like 30, 40% of the cost, maybe?
And is that two papers or one paper?
That we don't...
We did two.
This one we did two, but we just do... We can legally just do one and do a smaller thing, and the other one, it still is expensive. It's crazy, though, yeah.
I said on the last time, the Commission Commission, and we didn't have the attorney at, the only time he was there was the last, the first and last, he gave us direction.
Yeah, I don't think he was at every one of their meetings either. I don't think the attorney meeting went to every single meeting of theirs.
It seemed like pretty heavy involvement.
Input, yeah.
But it's a cost, so, and it would be great to find out a little bit more about that cost.
I think part of this cost too includes like the actual charter, like he's taking the actual charter, he's the one who's adding or deleting. He's writing the proposed text, he's writing the question, like he's doing that part of it too, so I'm sure that filters in somehow as well. But I think, Ben, to some ways, your point has, are, can we look at other ways for cost savings, legal, legal ads, and maybe rerun those numbers and see if we can get them lower?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'd love to see that legal ad thing come down. Just do one paper and, you know...
Yeah, but that's what we're...
And be on the website and have other areas. I mean, we certainly have wanted to do a legal ad, but it seems outrageous that, you know, the cost is so high.
It's pretty high. On like, the overall object, take the cost, you know, part to the side, like on the overall objective of doing it, the risks and the good parts, what do you guys think?
I'm not opposed to, and I, this was kind of the housekeeping stuff that we had talked about and they had talked about.
But that's, that's what it is now, but we don't know what's going back with. No, I'm, I'm not opposed to doing the general housekeeping. I, I would like to see more public involvement earlier, and I'm a little concerned it's still going to be a tight timeline, I think, but maybe, maybe the issues are inconsequential enough that it can be done. So certainly I'm opposed to it.
And we can also, on our side, we can write it, not say, we're going to do what they're going to do with it, but we can write it so we can give them till November 2026 instead of November 2025.
Which they're on.
And then if they, again, just like last time, if they choose to speed it up or they're done. I do know, I mean, they, I think they worked through a lot of the issues we've given them on the housekeeping stuff, and I think they did a lot of that work, but then they're like, this is complicated in how you word it and how you frame the questions.
It's all over the whole...
Yeah, they wanted to talk more with, I think, all the different department heads and get them more, so I think they have done a lot of the work, but especially if they want to take on other issues, then I think that'd be really tough.
Yeah, I think we should give them the extra year. I mean, I don't see that there would be a rush to do it in 2025.
I'd like to see it happen more the way we're doing the zone rewrite, the way we do the POCD rewrite, you know, a little more public involvement early on.
Just how would you go about trying to get them?
I don't know.
They do have a good POC update, we maybe have some new ideas, but...
I mean, could it, I guess it can't be, it couldn't be initiated as part of the POCD process, could it? I mean, could the, could the suggestions for changes come out of that?
No, I don't thi, I, like, bigger than, like, if somebody wanted to say, like, I just don't necessarily see the, the housekeeping items being anything or the, the gender neutrality stuff. But I do think from the POC, which I'll do during my update, they, we did get some, I think, some new good ideas about engage, public engagement. And then the other thing, again, we can think about... Actually, I don't know what's written about, okay, no, so that's fine. So let's be prepared for December. If you think of other questions or ideas that you want to put in, just email Stacy, and we'll be sure we have it for the December meeting. And then we'll re-update that timeline, it was so confusing. But about what timeline we have to fit. But if you guys don't feel like, and I don't feel like it, like, there's a huge time crunch, then we can give ourselves a little more, we still will need to know so we can put it into the budget. But that might give us a little bit more time, and then we can obviously bring it up with the Charter Commission members because I think four of them have already put in applications that they want to do it again. So also, you know, they might want to get it done and not drag it out, or maybe they'd be happy to. And then, again, it'll be totally open though if each other people can apply, and then there's obviously that one seat that will be open.
I just want to say, I think the other thing to consider when you're thinking about the budget is this time around, if you're talking about changes that are going to affect the entire charter, so gender neutral and things like that, we have to put that information in the newspaper. So you might be looking, if we use the Westerly Sun to run the full proposed changes and not the day and whatever, you still have to put it all in there. So you're still looking at, that cost will probably be higher than the last time. The last time it was only, you know, the short pieces of...
Yeah, but if it's only one paper, it's...
It'll be less than the paper.
It'll be less than two papers, but I'm sure, like, the Westerly Sun typically is a lesser amount in comparison to the day. Like, we're still talking about a lot of information.
Yeah, because every page.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, interesting. But, okay, thanks, Stacy. Anything else on charter? We have an award of bids. So Washington Street, School Street Improvement Plan, so DPDW, along with the Finance Director, received bids from Washington, received bids, sorry, for the Washington Street School Street Road Improvement Plan, and the lowest bid was submitted by BMW Paving and Landscaping LLC to provide drainage and road pavement improvements in that area in the amount of $907,296. And they are requesting the bid to be awarded to BMW. So could I get a motion to award the bid for Washington Street School Street Road Improvement Project to BMW Paving and Landscaping LLC in the amount of $907,296?
Soon?
A second.
Discussion?
So obviously this will happen next year. It's a little too...
Spring. Yeah, yeah, they were hoping for the fall, it'll be the spring.
And I noticed they're working on Edgemont Street now in the drainage for Washington Street. So how does this project align with that project?
It's a great question, and it's definitely confusing. It confuses us every time we talk about it. They're not, and it actually ended up working out well, though. So the drainage street, I should know the year, but it was like eight years ago, I think? Seven years ago, they started working on this? It's been that really long time coming, and they're finally starting on it. It's amazing, and so that's just to deal with the drainage...
So it's going to be there for like six weeks?
Flooding. Yeah, it's, it's amazing that we're finally here. And then this just happened that the same time that we're finally ready to pave Washington Street and School Street. But so it did work out well, so the drainage stuff will all be done, and then in the spring, go through and pave.
Okay, so where it says, where it says drainage improvements, that's mostly just paving?
Just paving, yeah, like the catch, the basic stuff, yeah. It is confusing, the wording.
Yeah. That's why, that's why I was wondering if it, how it impacted the other project.
All right, any else?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll be very excited. Okay, ARPA, because we created this wonderful process, so it's coming back to us. So we, so I think, that is, you know, the ARPA funds have to be spent by December of this year, the end of December this year, and so we have, we've been doing those different allocations where needed, so the amount left was $129,895. And so what Jim suggests that we do is that we use that money to put towards the purchase of an already approved dump truck in our existing SIP, and also cover some additional costs in the Town Hall HVAC project to utilize this balance. And then that way, you know, those SIP ones will have access to, to talk about together with the Board of Finance for, you know, whatever future projects we need to allocate that to, and that way we don't lose the money. So again, we had talked about this in the past, this is just the final amount, so it's the, and those were things that they could do right now. So that's really it.
So I understand that part, but what will, ultimately, what would be the impact on the projects that are being, the funds are being taken from, like the pocket of sidewalks?
Yeah, well, so that one, that one spent over its amount, so we actually had to add money to that. So that one, as far as ARPA went, totally was spent. The one, like the housing loan program that we still have, I don't know, I want to say it's close to $50,000 left in there to spend.
Thirty-five now.
Oh, yeah, thank you, perfect. That, he has like an earmarker saved, so that way he knows from that SIP line item that money needs to go into that program.
And the Board of Finance knows.
Yes, for that. There are some, though, where like we haven't, you know, engaged in contracts or allocated things, where like the Town Hall parking lot or things like we want to do, but they weren't necessarily essential. The Fourth District Voting Hall drainage, because that project is just so far, you know, so many complications. So that's where we said with the, with the Board of Finance that we would talk as a group and go back and see where we are as we're approaching our now budget.
Because you want, you want to spend the money.
Yeah, so we'll spend our money...
Spend money on things that...
And it'll give us the time to allocate the, the ones that don't have a specific project allocated with it. Because we could decide, yeah, let's still use it for the Town Hall parking lot, just take more time, or maybe we say we need it for another project that comes up or comes out of the blue.
But those, those projects, the Board of Finance has already approved them, so they're likely to be, look at them favorably again, hopefully.
We hope.
Yes, you would think. I could see, though, like, there might be things that come up that we're going to say, yes, we do need to pave Town Hall parking lot, but something else has come up that's more pressing, to be fair to them.
Yeah, we just have to prioritize.
We do need to pave Town Hall at some point. Okay, anything else? Okay, if not, so I'm going to make a motion to approve a line item transfer with an ARPA budget of $129,895.
Second.
Oh, I made, sorry.
You made the motion.
Sorry, all right, discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, my favorite, my favorite tiny grant. Okay, my favorite, my favorite tiny grant. This resolution for the Clean Vessel Act Grant Program authorizes the first selectmen to enter into execute and deliver documentation regarding the Clean Vessel Act Grant Program. The funding is one thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents, but it's very important. It provides federally funded matching grants to qualifying projects that basically provide sewage disposal to boats, so our rivers stay clean. And we get this every year, but this is...
So it's for on-ball boat?
Yeah, we do it, yeah. Um, we do this every year, but this is the first time that they've required a different resolution, so, um, and, um, the woman who runs it is really nice, and actually is a Stonington resident. She found out when we were talking to her. But, uh, and this, um, grant Public Works has been doing for quite some time, and now Molly's gonna help them going forward, so it's really good. But, um, okay, could I get your motion to approve the resolution?
Yes.
And a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No, this is great. Every year, I'm happy.
Yeah. All right, the motion passes.
Do we, uh, other than the thirteen hundred dollars that we get from them, do we invest in this as well?
We do. We have a line item. I don't know off the top of my head how much, how much it is in our budget, and then...
It's more than that?
Yeah.
Considerably more?
And then, no, not because we, um, I'll go back and look. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I remember seeing, I remember having a fight about it when you were...
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I think...
And then, yeah.
And there's no way we can get more than this as part of the grant.
Thanks, though. I mean, but I'll ask Molly, yeah, I don't think so. It's a lot of work, actually, but it's great, but it's great that we have it. Um, we'll take anything.
Fair enough.
Any more? Okay. Comments? I have a few updates. Do one of you want to start?
Do you want to start or do you want to...
Oh, sure, I'm willing, really quick. I had an email today from Tori Gimble from, uh, she's talking to the Hydro Management Commission, reaching out to me about the East Interbred Water, um, restoration, reconstruction, looking for some help with that. And, um, we're supposed to meet so I can find out what she's after, what the history of that is. I know you both know a lot more about it than I do. Uh, I know, I know nothing about it. Anyway, she sent a, um, sample letter that she hoped that we would, uh, send to support.
Oh, that's a good idea, start getting letters of support.
Yeah. I'm sure that, that's really all I know about it at this point. But if you can give me any guidance or...
Yes, we can, I can share with you the files we have on it, and I can send another follow-up. To the best of my knowledge, we still need clarification that we are allowed to and are the ones that truly need to be applying for these grants, because we don't own it.
Right.
Yeah, she mentioned that.
Sorry, I'm a dray. Um, and so... So I can send another email, just try, we're trying to just get clarification. I would assume, because when Rob Simmons was here, they had gotten the grant to do the engineering. So we've been trying to dig through...
Is the engineering done?
Yes, so the engineering is completely done, and I think that's what I consent to all. Stan Tech did all this engineering work, um, and it was even permitted. But I want to say it's like six, seven million dollars. So it was one of those things where we could never identify any grants that had no match or a low enough match that we could even apply. And then, and the ownership was questionable, so, or who was responsible for it. So it just, it was a complicated one. But we do always look, um, for ones that have no matching requirements. We haven't come across any that we've been able to apply for yet. But I'll also connect you with Molly, because she's been talking to Tori about it, uh, and we can send through the files. But even like, what's a polite word for hounding, like, um, persistent follow-up with deep could be useful just to really see if... I'm sure we're just, I'm probably approaching the wrong department to find out, like...
It's tricky to fund who to talk to.
Yeah, like who, and maybe they don't know either, and then it just gets complicated. But yeah, like, that's the first thing I think we need to clarify before they spend more time on it. But I'll, um, I need to do that.
And the only other thing, uh, I went to ZBAP meeting last night, and, let's see, there must have been forty people here. The room was absolutely packed, and they couldn't, they couldn't hear either, um, application because they didn't have five members on the floor, probably. So, um, I think we need to, we need to get that last vacancy seat filled.
Yeah, okay.
There's, there's still one thing, for, excuse me.
Yeah.
The, I mean...
We can do a...
It's not usually that big a crowd.
Put it on, no.
Yeah, we can do another push-out, um, and reminder, and, yeah.
Let's hit comment.
Um, okay, have a good one.
All right, um, just a couple of things who wanted to kind of highlight. Mr. Brigger, Boathouse Park, moving along, yay, finally. And we're hoping, I met with Molly to talk about that and a couple of other brownfield projects. But she's said they're hoping to hear on that last grant application in the end of the month. So we got our fingers crossed, because that would be really great. Kind of following up with the LEP about the fill that was placed. So I'm gonna update you on this. So the hotel placed fill on our property, which, as it turns out, is probably gonna come from where we're gonna get our fill from. However, we have a pretty specific, you know, we are in a state regulatory program. We have a requirement to test the fill that comes in, because we don't want to be covering contaminated material with contaminated material. So I've been working with the LEP, and, you know, we have a list of specifications for those tests.
And did the hope, so the hotel doesn't have any requirements to test their own fill?
Who knows? So we don't know if the hotel... They're not, you know, it's a good standard practice to test the fill that comes in to your project, but not everybody does it. So I can't speak for them.
So we don't know?
We don't know. So the goal would be to reach out, and we thought that it was probably more appropriate for you to do it, to reach out to them and say, can we have a copy of your environmental test for the fill? Because, again, a lot of people do that, and maybe it's the same specs we're asking for, or at least a lot of it. If not...
Why was it put there?
I was gonna say, I don't wanna, was it?
I was surprised.
So like, who, how was it discovered that it was just sitting there, and they're definitely not using it?
Um, I was told, but, no, no, it's, they, they spread it out. It's there. They, they put it on hundred and fifty cubic yards of fill.
Oh, on their part, but that's our, like, the shared part?
Yeah, and onto our property, yeah. So it's, it is an area that we have to address as part of our environmental control.
But it's part of their easement area?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think part of it actually goes beyond that, but most of it's the easement area. So the goal would be, either they provide us with the test results, and I'll, I can resend that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Or they test it. And as I said, I'm happy to sample it or direct someone to sample it, but we would like to see them test it.
Okay.
And not...
And it can be adequately tested now, or is...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, what happens if it's not clean fill, it raises a lot of concerns, especially if we're thinking of using the same fill source, but ideally, it's, it's a virgin source. So it isn't, you know, it's not something that came from somewhere. But it's, it's important to know, you know, here we are doing an environmental remediation, to know that what's on the site is clean.
Hopefully, they've already tested it.
Hopefully, they've tested it. I mean, as I said, it's just, you know, so I wanted to follow up on that and talk to you about it. And I talked to Molly, and we can, you know, we can talk further if you have any questions, or I can talk with Molly. But we thought it should be you approaching them. And if you need any other details, I can send them along to Stacy.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, and I had met with Molly to kind of update on the other, on the treadmill and the other brownfield sites. And there's actually a networking of brownfields program coming up at Hartford that I'm considering. She and I are considering going together, so...
That would be good.
So it would be good to kind of, it's, DECD is sponsoring it, so it might be good, especially with our project going on.
Okay, yeah.
Then also, I attended the stakeholder kickoff meeting for the Mystic, Stonington Mystic Resiliency Project.
How was that?
It was interesting.
Okay, from CIRCA?
Um, from CIRCA. Interesting, but it's good that it was a kickoff. The next couple of meetings are gonna be public engagement. So I know you're interested, especially in get, you know, finding out for the park. So soon as they get some dates, they sent out like a doodle poll to try to find some dates out.
Will they do a fly, like, will they handle that?
They are supposed to be doing that, however, I'll make sure that I share it so we can share it as well. Because the more stakeholders that we can get to these meetings to find out and talk about issues with the resiliency and the flooding. And it, it's interesting. It includes an area that comes up to, but doesn't include the park. And they're, it's, it, I don't know how it came up with...
Boathouse Park or...
Yeah, it doesn't include Boathouse Park. It does include Mr. Brigger Park, so... So, but it'll be good to, you know, I'm definitely gonna stay involved in that.
Thank you.
So, and attend. The next couple of meetings are supposed to be in person, and this one is a Zoom, so... It's like a gazillion people on the, on the call, they want all, whatever. So I'll keep you posted on that. And I did also want to highlight, because I got an email about this, and it's not in our town, but I think it's kind of important. They're doing, um, the restoration study for Both Point. And they reached out to the public, and they actually had six hundred and forty people respond. And now they are gonna have a Zoom meeting on November twentieth to try to get more input from the public, and, and I can share that. But it's, it's basically, again, through Yukon, but, you know, it may be some, to me, it's interesting, because we also, of course, have a state park in town, Burna, and I'm curious to see what they're doing at Both Point, to see if it actually could impact or help us. Finally, I did get an update, I, for the flood and erosion control, but you might be interested in the update on the, um, the levee repair on Mechanicsdale. Um, apparently, they've contacted contractors, because if you remember, it's in the budget, finally. So they've contracted a couple, contacted some contractors, and they're waiting to hear back on a final...
This is for the hinge?
This is for the hinge, the fabrication of the hinge. So they're trying to get it, um...
So it's a fabricator, basically?
It's a fabricator, basically.
So it's something that Public Works can do to dismantle?
They need to get pricing, he told me, for removal, transportation, and setup, transportation and reinstallation. So it's not something that they can do, and I don't know that they should be doing it. It's, you know, and it really is, there's a lot of safety aspects to that work. So I'm gonna follow up with him. He was gonna follow up, because he was kind of waiting to hear, so he was gonna prod them along. But it's maybe in the works.
Sounds like it might not be enough money. Was it seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, something like that, or fifty or something. I mean, they had gotten an estimate, but I don't know how old the estimate was, because...
It was recent, because I think that's what happened at, right? Yeah, yeah.
So hopefully, but I'll, I'll, I'm kind of following up, because I'm doing, following up on it for flood and erosion control. And they, uh, I figured I'd update you guys. That's it. I had my monthly meeting with Marion Butler, which is always good, so...
Was there anything?
Um, no, it's just, we talked about, you know, it's great because we have open communication. You know, she's meeting with some of the chambers to talk about different projects. So I told her to let us know if there's anything else that, you know, she thinks she has to come up with, but that's it. That's it.
I'll try and be brief. I think, just building on the Boathouse, so I, we were able to meet, and I went to the meeting. I thank you for all your tag teaming work on that. And I think everybody received it well, and basically what we said is, like, everything kind of rides on November. So we'll see if we get this big grant or what it comes back with. And if not, everybody seemed prepared to kind of pivot and regroup really quickly and to see how we might move forward with asking for the, whatever funding gap might be there, and that everything's ready to go out to bid, which was really exciting for everybody. Um, and so it's definitely moving along, so we'll hopefully...
Be phasing, probably.
They, that is how they did the bid work. It's just, I think it's, like, if it all works out, it'll work out great. But do, because the living shoreline, you know, probably should come last anyways, and that's what we're waiting on, um, kind of the funding part for. But eventually, if you don't do that, it'll erode into the river. So it's not like a permanent, but it can be phased for a while. And it sounds like they're doing a great job, but they're fundraising, and they're ready to hit go, and everybody's moving along. The other thing that's been taking up a lot of time is, um, this fire radio communication, um, meetings and systems. And Captain Schneider and Officer Sudman have been doing a great job really leading that, just because we have no one else to do it. So they've been taking it on, working with the different fire departments, also Old Mystic, um, and Mystic have already done it. So they've been really helpful about talking, moving over the state radio system. They've been really helpful in sharing their experiences and how it's worked. There was a grant we've been waiting for that was supposed to come out later this winter, and surprisingly, it came out at the end of last week. And they gave us, I think, till mid-December to apply. It's like the quickest turnaround period. And it requires a lot of information from the different fire departments. So Captain Schneider's been doing a really good job. He just sent something out today trying to get everybody, and Molly's done a great. She's had to basically stop all other grant work to focus on this. But hopefully, we can get, um, everybody's information together, get it all working, um, and get that in. And then we'll have to talk to the Board of Finance about, it's not much, I think it's only five percent, with a five percent local match. And this is just, if I understand it, for the portables, so that they would then need to do their own mobiles in the truck and their own pagers. It'll, it would still take a few years, but hopefully, moving in the right direction. I think we've mostly worked through all the concerns that have been raised about standalone radio system versus the state. But, um, we're having another meeting tomorrow morning about that, so hopefully, we keep moving in the right direction. Turn on two, well, all right, one on a positive. We have a meeting with Deep about our composting, our curb site composting program. I'd say, on the plus side, great meeting. They're really excited about everything Stonington's doing. We're number one in the whole state for our per capita recycling, you know, the lowest trash per capita. They had some great graphs they're supposed to send to us about these, you know, really impressive reductions we've seen. We have about fifteen hundred households participating in the composting, but we have, I think they said almost eight thousand households. So we really need to see those numbers go up. They have a whole marketing plan. They're really trying to help us. But then at the end of the meeting, I was like, oh, but the grant ends, the grant funding ends at the end of January. And so we've been now trying to work with them and the Commissioner and their team to figure out how they might potentially be able to help us continue to fund through the end of our fiscal year. And then I'll be asking the Board of Finance with, obviously, Jill, um, to consider, again, if the state would do it, like a fifty-fifty split for the next year, because the cost is high, it's mostly transportation. But the hope and goal is that then by that third year, we would have either the regional facility in Preston, um, up and running, and that's going really well, or the Lisbon plant might be getting, applying for a grant that if they can get it together to apply for, it's like get a quick turnaround time, um, they can move to co-collection. So we have two options that could really bring the cost of transportation down. And the Deep team did a great job in Waste Zero running scenarios where you could see how it could go down. But like, I want, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but it was like over two hundred thousand dollars that we need to be coming up with for next year.
That's the entire cost.
Yeah. Um, and so, it's like two-something. So basically, yeah, we, I sent a letter to the Commissioner and the Deep team, again, they've been so helpful, asking fully fund through the end of our fiscal year and fifty percent the next fiscal year, in hopes that we could get support for that. But there's no guarantee, like, they're ending that, the program that they funded us with, the current sustainable management materials is over, and they're moving to larger infrastructure projects. But we're hoping, because we are number one in the state, and we have been doing all this work with fingering partners, that they won't want us to stop and lose that, you know, momentum. And also, you know, they are looking to, to encourage more of this, so...
So we had, originally, when this first came out, we were kind of waiting to get started, talked about getting like the Seaport on board, or the schools, or anything like that. And it sounds like we could do that, except if it's gonna end, we need to find out.
And the complication came as, like, Crandall's our residential hauler, and that's who the program was planning on doing. And then Willow Mantic, or is the, is the commercial one. And they're interested, and like, but again, it's like, without the funding, so, um, it's tricky. But I think that's something else I want to talk to the Climate Change Task Force, if you can think of any other groups. Because I mean, to me, as we've talked about this in the past, they, there's so many things, you know, towns and cities can do about climate change. But the one thing that's really in our power and, you know, is our solid waste. And we're doing amazing as Stonington, and I would hate to see us reverse back and burning of wet food. It's one of the worst things we can be doing, so I told there's an argument...
Is there a way that Marion Butler might be able to help us? Is there a way to somehow partner with a school where we can have some of these materials available at the moment?
Yeah.
At the schools, or have a program about it, and kids can bring stuff home, or, you know, tell their parents about it. Maybe it's just a way to get, you know...
At the end of last year, we did send them home with like a flyer, but maybe we could make it more creative.
Certainly start at the high school or the middle school, you know.
This waste is actually being composted now?
Well, it's the anaerobic digesters, they turn into that clean energy. The, if they, the Preston plant, the Preston facility would be pure composting, um, if, if that's the way we did it right now.
So it's not being incinerated. I was, I was under the impression when you started, that it was being incinerated, that...
No, it's, um, it is, if the, if I'm saying right, anaerobic digester, and they turn it into clean energy, right? Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, but it's far. So the transportation cost and the cost for Crandall to basically do, to double the amount, because he doesn't have co-collection, most places don't have co-collection, is very expensive. So that's why, hopefully, we can get it, because it would just be so... And again, and credit to Deep, they, you know, we were, it was only supposed to be a year, and they already extended another year. So I mean, it's been, you've gotten more than, you know, than originally intended. But we're so close to seeing like a possible sustainable funding stream that, um... And again, one of the things they did say they're gonna be looking at those over the next, like, two months, like, can we get our numbers up at all? So I think, you know, if you guys have any ideas for marketing or...
It's gotta be growing, though. I mean, I see the trucks coming by with all the green bags stacked over...
I mean, that's why I think if we try to partner with, you know, getting these things, you know, people have been going to town, going to get them. But if the kids are aware, and then it's, you know, kind of hyped a little at the schools...
Well, another thing Jill is doing with the Deep and Waste Zero partnership is, in, because we got the new yellow bags that are, that are in them, they're putting a few green bags and with information about it. So when you go to the store, wherever you go get them, so they'll be in there with some information, so that'll be helpful. And some stores are more receptive to this than others, but they also have some nice marketing material that could go out if they're willing to, to like inform them. And, um, we had talked about doing like postcards and a billboard and all that stuff, but we're like, timeout, like, if we don't have the programs continuing, we can't do that. But if you have, yeah, other ideas for how to get the word out, um, I like the school idea, if there's other things to help market... there's other things to help market it that we could be doing. Um, I know Jill and the team there would be super happy, they're working so hard on it. And then to hand on a positive, we had two days of POCD interviews, and I would say like all the firms were fantastic. Like, they all brought different. Four, yeah. They all brought different things to the table, they were, I thought, all really impressive. And again, definitely got like a list of, between all their different strategies, new things we can be doing, for sure about community engagement. Um, obviously helps if you have a team and all the staff to do it, but it, still, there's things that we could be doing more of, um, that were, you know, just really interesting and innovative, and they all had different experience and different teams and different data that they could gather, and it just seemed really exciting. So I think by next week, hopefully we should, um, have a decision. I think, as far as I could tell, everybody left being like, oh, like, this is gonna be really hard. So I haven't even done my scoring yet, I don't think anybody else has, but, um, they were all really impressive.
And who's on the POCD interview committee?
So it's myself and Clifton, and then two members of the Planning Zone Commission. And then we were gonna have Chris B. on it, but then the Washington Street project took off this week, so he couldn't do it, which was fair. Um, but yeah, they were all wonderful.
Who's in?
It was the chairman, and then Commissioner DC, DC, DCO. Um, so we'll see. So hopefully, but yeah, they, I was really, I was afraid, because it was delayed so long, if people were still gonna be interested and able and willing, and we had four really, really standout firms. It was good. So I think that's it. Anything else, Stacy, that you want me to?
Um, I put the transition program, and how one of those students are, thank you for the, I want to.
Yeah, sort of reminder. So we've talked about this in the past, the high school, the transition program, for kids who are like eighteen to twenty-two, um, and Gabby does an ama, and her team do an amazing job with them. Um, and through with Marion, like, we've gone over there and cooked and done stuff, and then just two weeks ago, three, so they came and did like a, um, breakfast, like a thank you breakfast for town staff. It was kind of delayed, it was an idea Patty had before she left to thank everybody for the HVAC, you know, mayhem. Um, and, but they made quiches, they homemade quiches, they did like yogurt cups, they did waffles, um, coffee, and like, they do this for the school sometimes, and they go out and do this other places. Um, and they're just absolutely amazing, and really talented also bakers. Um, but one of the other things she shared with us is they made this video that we put out on, um, the town website, and I don't think we did Instagram yet, but we did the Facebook post.
On YouTube?
And then, I, it's on the YouTube, um.
It's an incredible.
It's an amazing video, if you haven't watched it, it, they did such an amazing job with it. Um, but basically, the, the ask is for nonprofits and businesses in the community to think about how they can incorporate these youth into what they're doing. So it could be as simple as coming and just, you know, like talking to them about what they do, like, they've come to Town Hall every year, we just, we get a tour, every department talks about what they do. Um, or it could be more extensive, like Surf Cantina, like Endog Watch, have them come and actually cook and like work in there, and do everything, and they do a fantastic job. Um, they've also had, um, they work in a smoothie shop, they've done stuff with the seaport, um, actual, like, you know, hands-on work, like blacksmith work, like, I mean, extensive. So if you know any businesses, big or small, or nonprofits, who would be interested in having them in, like we said, it could be a one-off visit, or it could be, you know, a project that's, you know, one time for a week, or it could be ongoing for an entire semester or year, um, so they're, they're just absolutely amazing, and they ask the best questions.
Individuals, individuals?
Yes, there's about, I forget how many kids, but different students will go different days, some go off five days, some are there on different days. Um, but yeah, they're all, you know, Stonington youth who are that eighteen to twenty-two special needs, um, and kind of the, you know, different job training, and they were, they were wonderful. But the video really speaks much better than I could about it, and they, and we're just trying to get it shared. So even if like you're on any email list, like if you're on the DTC or RDC email list, like, share it out with them. If they know any business owners, like, I don't know, like Mystic Networks might be willing to do something, or, you know, anybody who might be willing to do that. Anything else, Stacy?
Uh, no.
All right, anything else? If not, we, we'll meet again in December.
All right.
Thanks.